Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order our city council regular meeting for September 25, 2024, and I'll ask Councilmember Schaefer to lead us in the pledge.
Please follow me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of this country, one nation, under God, with liberty and freedom of the world.
Councilmember Middleton?
Present.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez Taft?
Here.
And Mayor Karpinski Costa?
Present.
Next item, please.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, September 30th at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable 14, and this meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
The next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
Mayor, I have a couple of suggestions here.
Okay.
I'd like to move the consent calendar right behind public comment.
Okay.
And then we'll move forward from there. There's a couple items we want to pull, but I think we move that, and then we talk about pulling which items.
Okay, any other changes to the agenda?
And Madam Mayor, I was going to see if we staff would request that we pull Item 11, the zoning code update, for recycling centers, and we'll bring that back at a future meeting.
Okay, item is pulled. Any objections to pulling that item? Okay, staff recommends it, it's done, deal. So with those changes, most approve the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. So our next item, then, would be?
So our next item is presentation number four, proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming September 28th through October 4th, 2024 as Good Neighbor Week.
I have asked Councilmember Schaefer to do this proclamation.
Thank you, and thank you very much for coming to the podium already, because I was going to say I'd like to invite folks to the podium. So let's get started here. Proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming September 28th to October 4th as Good Neighbor Week. Whereas the City of Citrus Heights has recognized Good Neighbor Week for the second year in a row, understanding that the strength and vibrancy of our community is deeply rooted in relationships between neighbors. And Good Neighbor Week serves as an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the countless acts of kindness, cooperation, and generosity that neighbors extend to one another each day, fostering a sense of belonging and community spirit. Whoever wrote this, very well done, so far. Although the simple gestures such as lending a helping hand, sharing resources, and engaging meaningful conversations, neighbors play a vital role in enhancing the quality of life for all residents, and the Residents Empowerment Association of Citrus Heights and the neighborhood areas are committed to promoting values, the value of respect, compassion, unity among neighbors, encouraging everyone to actively participate in building a stronger, more connected community. And the City of Citrus Heights recognizes that being a good neighbor extends beyond individual actions and encompasses the collective responsibility to contribute positively to the well-being of our neighbors and the city as a whole. And recognizing the importance of fostering compassion and respect for our neighbors, the City of Citrus Heights encourages all residents to participate in events and activities to establish connections with our neighbors during the Citrus Heights Good Neighbor Week. There now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights declares a week of September 28th through October 4th as Good Neighbor Week to celebrate and continue the spirit of neighborly connection. All right. So any comments from councilmembers?
I do. I want to say congratulations to Natalie for bringing back this wonderful event from NUSA. Money well spent, and we sent you off to learn something, and you came back with this. This is a wonderful event, and I hope we'll get great participation this year like we did last year.
Great. Anybody else?
Who else?
All right, I just want to congratulate Reach and the city as a whole. This is really the embodiment of community, and I want to just say that out loud, that this is super important to our community. So can we come down? Would you like to say a few words? We'll come down and take a picture.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Say a few, Lauren.
I do. As all of that proclamation said, there is a certain fabric to this community, and that is our residents, our neighbors. Engagement, participation, it creates individual well-being, community well-being, safe space, a sense of place. All of these events that happen during Good Neighbor Week will be part of the nostalgia of Citrus Heights, that fabric in the neighborhoods that we have. Jimmy Carter recognized National Good Neighbor Day, and the Missouri has taken it a step farther with the Missouri Good Neighbor Week. That is where this project came from, from NUSA, pulling that from Missouri. Citrus Heights has adopted the Good Neighbor Week philosophy as well at the recommendation of Reach. We want to spend a week celebrating all things neighboring. We want to do acts of kindness. We want to give recognition to good neighbors. We want to participate in community events. To make that a little easier, some of your neighborhoods are hosting neighborhood events during Good Neighbor Week. So Park Oaks Neighborhood Association, Neighborhood Number Five, Pono, will be having a movie in the park night on October 4th, and that will be at Brooktree Park, where we will be watching The Nightmare Before Christmas. So come out and enjoy a movie with some neighbors. On Good Neighbor Saturday, this coming Saturday, September 28th, we are still promoting a citywide yard sale. If you are hosting a yard sale, please get on chgoodneighbor.com and upload your address. I believe we have five participants at this point. There will be a neighborhood yard sale at the SOAR Clubhouse, Dr. Jana. We were given that space by the Citrus Heights Arts. So this Saturday, any sale that happens on that property, the money goes back into Neighborhood 10. So come and buy something, support our neighborhood. Also, Citrus Heights Arts and SOAR Neighborhood 10 has collaborated for Pictionary Party. This will be Saturday, September 28th, from 4:30 to 6:30 at that same clubhouse, and we have prizes and snacks and a whole lot of fun. That is what I have for you.
You should go down and take a picture.
Photo op side.
Come on, all my neighborhood friends, get up here. Ruth? Nobody wants to come up from the neighborhood? No. Come on. Do you want neighborhood fans?
Yeah, get in the picture. A little peer pressure? A little? All right, come on, Ruth, there you go. You got her for peer pressure, I like that. There it is. All right, everyone, you look fantastic. All right, thank you. Okay.
Next item is public comment, and if you wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Speakers are limited to five minutes each, and the mayor has the discretion to adjust the allotted time. There is a countdown display that will flash red at the end of the allotted time. Consistent with the Brown Act, the council is prohibited from engaging in a discussion or taking action on any item not appearing on the agenda.
I have several. David Warren, you're going to speak on Item 6. Do you want to speak now, or do you want to wait till we do consent?
It's coming up next, but...
Yeah, but I have about seven or eight publics cards.
As good a time as any.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is David Warren. The reason I'm addressing you on Item 6 is although I'm unable typically to come to city council meetings because my wife's terribly ill, which brings up the request that perhaps you should reinstate the ability for people to call in to make comments, because I do watch.
Be careful what you ask for.
Yeah, but it would be a wonderful opportunity for people like myself. But I became very concerned about some of the comments that were made concerning the restrictions on parking. Many of you made appropriate comments concerning the CHPD using discretion. I've made a career out of making that a problem for all sorts of cities. Discretion has another word, discrimination. And unless we have in the municipal ordinance a set of parameters for the police department to apply that discretion, we're setting the city up for some very significant issues. For example, if there's a white person parking and there's a black person parking, and the police come up and say, "You have to move," the person may take it not as a standard procedure, but because they feel they're being discriminated against. It's very important that we have a set of parameters for the police department. This is not an aspersion as to our police department. You have to understand, when I first started practicing law in San Diego County, any young people driving a Volkswagen minivan with a peace symbol on it were the subject of, "Oh, you hippies, we're going to use an oak stick on you and arrest you." We have now very professional police officers. Things have changed dramatically. But that has not solved the problem of some people viewing themselves as being oppressed because the police come to speak to them. So I would ask, before you approve Item 6 today, you take a step back and set forth a set of parameters, because I want to give you this example. I live in the Crosswoods, off of Crosswood Circle. There is a person, I don't know who it is, who has a mini home that's on the back of a Nissan truck, and this person has been parking there for approximately the last eight months. And the way they avoid the police department is they move the vehicle, one day they're on San Tomas, and the next four days they're on Crosswood Circle. And they keep moving back and forth, and they move farther down Crosswood Circle. So they're in a different place, but proximate to the apartment buildings there. Now they can be there month after month after month, evading the municipal ordinance, but they don't seem to be a problem. There's no dirt around the vehicle. I don't object to that. But what happens if another person comes and they say, "Well, you're leaving that person alone, and you're citing me." Please, take a step back. Now, I talked to the city manager, and he said, "Well, the police often use discretion. They pull someone over, and instead of giving them a ticket, they give them a warning." Well, there's a big difference between a homeless person living in a motorhome feeling oppressed versus a teenager's going 45 in a 35 zone and saying, "Don't ever do that again." Please, take a step back before you adopt the ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, David. David, so you know, you can email your comments to AVAN, to our city clerk, Amy, AVAN@citrusheights.net, and she will read your comment.
But as you can see, I tend to bluster more than 250 words.
But if you can't make it, Amy can read that to us.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm going to take the next speaker out of order because she's on the same topic. Margaret Kleek. You hear, Margaret?
I know she's on her way. I don't know whether it's better to do it now or during the topic, but I will...
You want to wait?
How many people want to talk on the topic? Am I sure that I'll be able to talk?
Seven others. You can wait till after these seven, or you can go now?
I'll go now. Okay, I had a prepared statement, but the gentleman that spoke before me is much more knowledgeable on that topic than I am, and it was the point that I wanted to make, so I'll just briefly read through that section. I'm here to express my opposition to the inclusion of cars sleeping in the anti-camping ordinance. My first objection is a macro issue and speaks to the constitutional rights and equal protection under the law. It was publicly stated in this chamber and reported in Sentinel that this prohibition would be selectively applied, and it was openly expressed that the police were trusted to know to whom to apply it. I have serious issues with the notion of laws being enacted and the citizens told not to worry, "It's just a tool for our police and will be used with discretion." This swings wide open a door to abuse. Perhaps our current police organization would not abuse it, but this is no guarantee that changes in personnel and organizational culture will always make that true. This ordinance gives cause for search and seizure, et cetera, and should not be taken lightly. Further, given the demographics of Citrus Heights, I think disparate impact of this law is quite likely and exposes the city to litigation, especially given the public announcement of selective enforcement. I also feel that this law is quite hypocritical on the part of our community. Citrus Heights has the most lax parking restrictions and parking enforcement for RVs and vehicles of any municipality in our area. You can drive down any RD7 street and see motorhomes and boats parked in the front facade of homes, allowing no use of the garage or driveway for parking. Some homes park multiple vehicles on the street as well as commercial vehicles. I guarantee you that if Citrus Heights considered passing an ordinance that motorhomes could not be parked in the front facade and gave permit stickers to limit on-street parking, this chamber would be stormed by residents with tiki torches and pitchforks screaming about their personal property rights. Ample research supports that no restrictions on RV parking reduces property values and creates higher incidences of crimes of opportunity such as car break-ins and provides cover for home burglary. Yet you know you would never address this. But apparently, this community is totally on board with impingement on the rights of the most vulnerable in our community and how they use their property. Finally, the most important issue is a humanitarian one. Most people sleeping in their cars are likely at the most difficult period of their life, a shattered relationship, job loss, crushing medical bills, et cetera. For many who live in their cars, the situation is transitional, and they are still able to have the mobility to get to work, to the cheap gym to shower, and get ahead a little bit to find a room rental and get back on their feet. This ordinance assures that what could have been a stepping stone out of homelessness becomes a tripping stone to even worse circumstances. What type of a community treats the most vulnerable of its people with the most harsh laws? And why would we want to do this to our police? Why do we want to do this to our police? Many, I'm sure, want to protect and serve, not roust unfortunate people from the last safe place of refuge they have. Who would want to do that, and at what cost, both in terms of resources and in terms of emotional toll? Please do the right thing and leave the people who need to sleep in their registered vehicles alone. At least hold off on this until Hart can research and present options for migratory safe parking places, similar to Winter Sanctuary, and present that proposal to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Next speaker is Gigi, Citrus Heights Arts.
Gigi Rayford, I'm sorry, you didn't write your last name down, I just happen to know it. So, hi, everybody. We're just here to report on Artbeat. So, you know, we had Artbeat, we extended it to be more than one day. We had an in-line gallery. We had sales of $4,000 for the artists. We don't take commissions, so all of the money went to the artists. On the heels of that, you'll see a video after this. But on the heels of that, we decided to do a community program, and we call it the Community Canvas. And it's free to the community, it will happen once a month. Now, two of them won't be free because they're kind of big, but most of the rest will be free to the community to come and learn about art, to participate in art. Hope you all will support that, I know you have already. We really appreciate the city's support. I just want you to check out the video, don't want to talk a lot. So, we're gone.
When is it? Is this the report from last year?
No, this is the report from this year.
The one we just had?
Yes.
Okay. I thought you were announcing a new one. No, okay.
No, no.
Okay. It was a great event. Hey. Oh, you have a video.
Jane, do you see it?[1335.99]
Nice.
Very nice.
Thank you, Gigi. Next is Al Fox.
Good evening, council. My name is Al Fox. I am speaking tonight in support of San Juan Unified School District Measure P, which is a forward-looking measure who's coming on our ballot this coming up. And I think it has a great influence and impact on what Citrus Heights is going to see. Measure P is a culmination of assessments by district teachers, staff, parents, and community members in several from Citrus Heights about the rehabilitation, repair, and replacement of classrooms, leaky roofs, plumbing bathrooms, repair and replacement of water pipes, electrical wiring, removal of asbestos and lead paints, replacement of older security fencing systems and fire safety, installation of safe drinking water stations, and I will cite one in just a moment, within our schools in Citrus Heights. And that includes all 12 of our schools, high schools, elementary, and middle school. One of the water-drinking fountains that has been completed was done in a joint venture between the district and Rotary. And that's at Woodside K-8. We put in a new water filtration system with refrigerated water at the request of students who are part of the Innovative School. They wanted to get rid of the plastic water bottles on campus. And then, as Rotary's part of that, we purchased refillable water bottles, plastic water bottles, for every student in the school so that they can use that refill station. And those will be presented to the students in about a week, I think it is. This project also includes improvements for facilities, including performing arts, career technical education, science, math, and technology. Some current projects paid for by previous bond measures that are now maturing include new roofing and HVAC systems at some schools, including Mariposa K-5, which they've worked on diligently through the summer. And they're just now finishing up the HVAC system there. Security fencing and upgrades at several elementary campus locations in Citrus Heights, including Lichen K-8, which was desperately needed and has been completed now. And literally, you do not get on campus until electronically unlocked gates are opened so that even the parents can come on campus to pick up their kids during the school or after the school day. The building of a new football track and field stadium at Mesa Verde High School. Repair resurfing of sports facilities at San Juan High School, including the tennis courts, baseball fields. Partial funding and support of a self-help alumni project to rehabilitate the former JV baseball field at San Juan High School into a girls' softball field so that they can bring that program back. They're working there now. They do have a team. But they're looking to expand the team and to expand the team's outreach to other schools and other baseball clubs. This will be completed over the next several months. Funding provided by the new bond Measure B will be, will continue to provide improvements in our Citrus Heights schools. New, fully-equipped science classrooms at San Juan High School, potentially a multipurpose building at Sylvan Middle School. Safe water refill stations for each campus so students can use refillable water bottles rather than the one-time-use plastic bottles. Innovative Program students are the drive behind that particular project. These are just a few of the very limited list of projects and possibilities that will result from Measure P funding. Most current existing bond issues that we have now that were passed years before will be completed. And their funding will come to an end, and they will be paid for and done. This new bond issue will pick up from that over the next, I think it's five to eight years. Those bonds will be out. No longer will they be costing us money. So, the money that those had been going towards those bonds will now be applied to the new bond system if we pass it. And we will have, we will not see a gigantic increase, if any raise in potential costs to the individual property owners as a result of this bond. Current estimates indicate potential decreases over the life of the bond also. And if you go on the San Juan Unified School District's webpage and you look up the bond issue information that is there, you can see a bar graph diagram of the exact cost as this goes from year to year, and the payoff periods, and the duration of the bond to 2054, 455, I believe it is. It's one of the longest-running bond periods they've done. But it's because of the larger price tag that they're putting on this so they can complete more of the projects and be assured that these things are done over a period of time. Most importantly, Measure P funds will serve as matching funds for potential state and federal grant funding opportunities. This is our opportunity as a community to invest in education of our future generations. Citrus Heights will continue to grow. We have 200 more students in our school this year than we did last year. We are seeing improvements in student achievements as the post-pandemic impact on learning lessons and those impacted students begin to catch up with grade-level performance. Those things are occurring. They're slow, but they are happening. My reason to be here tonight is simply to ask this. I know that there has been no position taken by the political parties, by the Taxpayers Association. I'm going to ask you to individually take a position, say, "We need this in Citrus Heights." This is going to do what we've always wanted to have done. It's going to be a great start for that. And I ask you to support Measure B. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Debra. Oh, help me out here. Beauty?
No. Buetti.
Oh.
That's okay.
Say it again. I want you to get to the microphone, so I can hear it.
Sure. Buetti.
Buetti. Okay, thank you.
And I want to say yay to Prop P. I'm a sub at San Juan Unified for the last two years, and I love everything you said. And I just subbed at Woodside. Delicious water you have.
You need to stand in front of the microphone so we can hear you.
I'm a little nervous. It's all right. Hi, so my name is Debra Buetti. And I'm here, I'm representing the Heritage Manor Townhouse Community located off of Auburn Boulevard, right before Greenback. I'm also a board member there of the HOA, and I'm also a homeowner. We have been going through several issues in terms of safety and nonsense from certain businesses on Auburn Boulevard. And we talk about it a lot at our meetings and with each other as neighbors. And I thought it would be time for me to come in and officially let you all have it on the record. And so, here I am. Again, I'm a little nervous. There are two main sources of the problems my community is facing. First of all, we're 184 units. We're townhouses. The first problem involves the extra-space storage unit on 6230 Auburn Boulevard. Fellow board members and homeowners Chanel Pringle, Paolo Ferrero, and Lorena Hernandez live close by there. And what we're noticing, what's been happening, is trash is being thrown over the concrete dividing wall in the middle of the night. That's the problem. It's the middle of the night. Some examples of that trash, and this is from Chanel Pringle, is urine-soaked clothes, canned foods in bags. Between 2:00 and 4:00 a.m., there is people screaming and arguing. This is happening almost nightly. P.S., Chanel is surviving stage IV colon cancer. As she deals with that, she's also dealing with this almost nightly craziness. She feels pretty sure that people are living in that storage unit. And you and I know that BBC 21701, it's illegal to live in a storage unit. So, I wanted to bring your attention to that. So, just craziness, all night, almost every night. Our second area of concern is the recycling center on Auburn. I believe it's called RAI, R-A-I, Recycling Center. Two more homeowners, they're not board members, but Rick Ryan and a woman named Rose, have to suffer constantly with used syringes getting thrown over the wall, you know, the wall that's on Auburn Boulevard. Some items that have recently been thrown over are boom boxes and electric keyboard. Rose can't have her grandchildren over in her yard because she's frightened of all the used syringes that come over. They shake the recycling gate when it's closed, screaming for it to open. And we know that the officers have been over to it. It's like a new campground starting to form right where my community ends on Auburn. And the recycling and that store is happening. Superstop Market and Liquor. But it's starting to get worse, louder, and more frequent. A note that Rick wrote to me to read to you. Street people shaking the chain-linked fence, trying to get drugs, cursing, yelling nonsense. And again, this is all happening in the middle of the night, after all these businesses are closed. Superstore liquor and food, street people are camping out, living overnight in the parking lot. And also, the Citrus Heights Car Wash and Smog Place that's right adjacent to the store. He says automobiles are parked in the back of the stalls all throughout the night. And there's loud music and screaming and fighting and partying going on. And that's really all I have to say. You have a lot going on. I love this town. It's way safer and calmer than San Francisco, which is where I retired from. But it's really affecting the quality of our lives. It is. We're homeowners. We're taxpayers. And I just want it to become part of your radar as we move forward. I just want to remind you that there is another recycling place on Greenback. It's less than a mile from the recycling place that's by our place. I keep meaning to pull over and get the name of the street, but I never do. But it's less than a mile away. So, there's two recycling places. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'm putting little notes on, hence his follow-up. Okay. Next speaker is, hang on. Trent. Oh, you're going to pronounce your last name when you get up there. I'm not even going to try that one.
It's Puskas.
Puskas?
Puskas, yeah. It's Hungarian. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council members. My name's Trent Puskas. I'm an area manager with TNT Fireworks. I have the opportunity to represent nonprofits here in Citrus Heights as well as the greater Sacramento area. I'm not here so much to talk about that, but about a new initiative we have that we're backing to combat illegal fireworks in the state of California. As you know, or may know, TNT Fireworks year-round maintains a state-approved Safe and Same fireworks fundraiser for over 2,700 nonprofits in the state of California. Thirteen here in the city of Citrus Heights locally. We also support our local cities as well as local enforcement jurisdictions, SAC Metro, SAC City Fire, all those jurisdictions, in providing educational materials in regards to the safe use and proper use of our Safe and Same products and disposal. We also back state bills, most notably State Bill 839, allowing local jurisdictions to impose administrative fines for illegal fireworks use and possession. We also created the NALAM app, which is an illegal fireworks reporting app that is available for communities as well as local enforcement agencies to utilize for reporting purposes. We also collaborate with local anti-illegal fireworks groups across the state to address community-specific issues pertaining to illegal fireworks. We have Citizens Against Illegal Fireworks here in Sacramento that we work closely with, and we really help support them in their endeavors. We also advocate for stronger local fireworks ordinances with higher administrative fines to help curb the use of illegal fireworks in communities as well as to cover some of those costs for enforcement here in local communities in Citrus Heights as well as the greater Sacramento area in California. Our latest initiative is also backed by the General Fireworks Advisory Committee to the state fire marshal. And this initiative is to have the state fire marshal present a white paper to Governor Gavin Newsom, requesting permission to begin the process of creating an interstate task force and exploring the possibility with the California Attorney General establishing an interstate task force made up of fire and law enforcement agencies of Nevada and California to collaboratively address the illegal fireworks issue in this state. And also, on top of that, to negotiate an interstate compact with Nevada to better control the flow of illegal fireworks from Nevada into California. It is estimated that 60% to 70% of the legal fireworks in California come from 13 retail stores in Nevada. Seven in northwest Nevada, six in southwest Nevada, and a town called Perron. With this being said, we're looking for local support from city officials like yourself to write a letter to Gavin Newsom in support of this initiative for an interstate task force between California and Nevada. This letter will help the state fire marshal get backing to take the necessary steps to create this task force. If you need more information on this initiative, my contact information is on the comment card. Always happy to have a conversation with you about that. And I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Alfred Sanchez.
This thing on? Yes, it's on.
Be a little closer.
I feel like I'm stooping down here. Hi, my name is Alfred Sanchez. I'm a resident here of Citrus Heights. I'm actually a homeowner. But, okay, here goes. I've been thinking long and hard about what I'm going to say today. And somebody just said, "Stick to the point." So, with a heavy heart, I come here and say, when Brett Daniels started mormon-ing with the mayors, I would come in and I would talk to him, and he would have these six little muffins there. And I would ask him for them. And he would say, "Yes, I could take them." And at the September 11th meeting, somebody said that they were being stolen. So, just on principle and for the record, I did not steal the muffins. And I know it sounds stupid and petty, but it really hurt my feelings. And I just wanted to say something. Thank you.
Thank you, Alfred. The next speaker is Bill Shirley.
Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Bill Shirley, and I'm president of CHASON, which is an acronym for Citrus Heights Areas 7, 8, and 9. For those who don't know, the city is divided into 11 areas since the city was formed. And each area has, should have, representation that the city can count on and rely on for providing, utilizing them to provide information or to be of service to the city itself. Some of these areas are active, and others are not. I would like to respond to remarks made at the last city council meeting opposing the combining of areas, associations within our city and those who express their opinions. CHASON takes in three areas, like I said, 7, 8, and 9. And our boundaries comprise the same boundary as the city council district, or District 2. And we are proud to be represented by Mary Jane Lopez Taft. She is a great support to us. CHASON's board is comprised of members of each area, not just one. So, we do have representation. And we know the concerns of the local neighborhoods within the three. CHASON's board is very active. And we've been able to bring in more people and get more people involved because we do take in three areas. CHASON has only one school within its boundaries, and that is in Area 7. But the school's student body comprises of students from all three areas and other areas within the city. That school is Woodside K through 8. And it's been brought up a couple times tonight. We have built a, I'd say, a great partnership with the school. We have a member of our board that meets with them on a monthly basis. And we are there to support them for their various activities. And every Christmas, we don't want to be recognized for what we do, but we sit down with the staff at Woodside, and they have a list of families and children who are in need. And then, we meet with them and do the best we can to provide for the needs of those families so those children can have a wonderful holiday season. CHASON, as most of you know, we host National Night Out once a year. And since we have combined areas, it allows us to have the means to be able to put on this event. It is also a wonderful opportunity for us to involve various individuals, schools, churches, utilities, organizations, and even the Citrus Heights Marching Band to participate. And by doing that, we bring the community together and invite not only our three areas, but the whole city. CHASON has a large number of businesses in our area. We have the Sunrise, and we have Greenback. And so, we, as board members, have visited all of the businesses within our three areas, not just one or two, but all three. And by doing so, we let them know who we are, what we are, and how can we help them. And by doing this, we've also listened to their needs and their complaints or their concerns. And we've made sure that we've provided the means by which they can meet with the city. And I want to say thank you to the city for addressing the concerns which these different businesses had. I'm also pleased to say, by meeting with these businesses, that we've created some wonderful working relationships. And so, in order to do National Night Out, in order to be able to do our Christmas Giving Tree event, we rely also on these businesses. And they are more than generous to help us during these two events in the holiday season. CHASON also has a wonderful working relationship with Sunrise Park and Rec. And over the years, we've been able to provide materials and manpower to assemble playgrounds, rebuild tables, benches, and structures at parks within our areas. CHASON has a great working relationship with city staff, and we appreciate that their doors are always open to us. And I'd like to just recommend Armando, who I have an email right now about concerns on some of the trees along Old Auburn. And he always includes to make sure that we are well-informed. And then, we are also a great support to him, as he is for us. Strength comes in numbers. By combining our areas, we are stronger, we are more active, and we are more involved in our community. So, in closing, I'd like to leave with this. We are a democracy. When each of the areas within CHASON combined, it was by the will of the people. Board members made their recommendations. The members of the areas were notified. And it was by approval of those living within the areas that we were able to combine these neighborhood areas slash associations. So, I don't think it's up to the city council. It should be up to those who live within those boundaries to make that decision and determine what they want to do, whether to combine or not combine. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one last speaker. Alfred, did you want to talk about the camping ordinance?
I was going to wait till the end of the presentation.
There's no presentation. It's on consent. For now, it's on consent.
I really don't know what else to say that I didn't say last time or the time before. But for those of you... Well, first of all, actually, I want to thank everybody for the dialogue I have with the city, the city manager, the chief of police, Tim, and all of you. I appreciate it so much. You have all showed me mad respect. But I think we should not just jump into this decision tonight. I think that we should really think hard about maybe setting stringent guidelines on this, you know, a time or something. Because, like I said, the people that are sleeping in their cars, they're the ones that are cooking your food in restaurants. They're the ones that are ringing up your groceries. They're the ones that are paying for insurance. They're the ones that have registered their vehicles. And to me, that shows me something. Because I know from being on the streets, if you're a hardcore drug addict, you have sold your car or you're not paying your registration or you're not paying your insurance. And so, I slept in my car. And, you know, I was down on my leg. So, I would recommend strongly to consider tabling this, sitting down with city staff, and maybe just coming down with some strong guidelines to where it doesn't create a problem. But let's face it, if you have, if that's all you have in your car, you're going to be sleeping in it. And to, I don't want to use the word criminalize, but to give somebody a ticket for doing all they can, it's, you know... I try to use my words carefully. But I just, I'm just asking you to reconsider tabling this, coming up with some good, strong guidelines. And like I said, I don't know what to say. I could ramble on about this for an hour. But instead, you all have a good night, and I'll see you later.
Thank you, Alfred. That's all the public speaker sheets I have. Is there anyone who needs to public speak and didn't yet fill out a speaker sheet? You may approach the podium. Seeing none, we'll move to the next item.
So, we're taking the consent calendar, items 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10.
May I like to pull item 6 for a separate vote, please?
And did you want to do 10?
Oh, and yes, yes, also item 10.
Okay, so item 6 and item 10 are pulled out. So, we need a motion for 5, 7, 8, and 9.
Move for rule.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, can you read item 6?
Item 6 is the second reading of an ordinance amending Citrus Heights Code, Chapter 50, nuisances, Article 3... nuisances, Article Three, Camping, Sections 50 through 500 to 50 508. And the recommendation is to adopt the ordinance making the amendments.
And you pulled this?
I pulled this. I'd like to just kind of make some comments about this. I was really moved by Michael Largabacino's comments the last meeting. It's, it's not an easy decision. It is really a tough one to, I wish we could find some way to sort of do a carve out, but I can't seem to figure out what that carve out looks like. I don't be, since we, we look at all of the other cities in the region, have a very similar ordinance. If we have one that's absent of that, we're going to invite everybody who wants to sleep in their car to our city. That's, that's, it's untenable for me. I, I am compassionate with folks that are down on their luck, that are really having a hard time. It also, we, we can't ignore the fact that when an officer interacts with the person who's living in their car, it's an opportunity for them to take services. And we, and, and that's also a very compassionate thing to do. So while, you know, I, I wish that, that there was some way that we could sort of, like I said, find some way to, to work this out. I just can't support the invitation of everybody who wants to sleep in their car to drive to Citrus Heights and sleep in their car. Can't do it. So that's all I have to say.
Does anyone else have a comment for this? Is there a motion for item six?
Move, move approval.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Schaefer, second by Councilmember Lopez Taft. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can you read item 10, please?
Item 10, the subject is 2024 Bridge Maintenance Project Authorization of Additional Work, City Project 21-09. And there's a recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the additional work.
And you pulled this, like?
I pulled this. So I had a couple of residents email me and wonder why the 46% jump? What do we, did we miss something along the way? How did that, how do we arrive at a 46% increase in the cost of this project going from 700 plus thousand to over a million? And that's, that's really what I want, certainly want the public who's watching this on TV and here to understand how we arrived, how this, how we got there from here.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. I'm Leslie Bloomquist, City Engineer. I do have an overview of the staff report. If you don't mind, I'll just start from the beginning.
Sure.
On how we got to where we are today with this recommendation. So the recommendation is to increase the overall budget. As part of a statewide safety program, Caltrans inspects all the bridges in the state of California that are listed on the National Bridge Inventory. There are 31 bridges in the city of Citrus Heights that we own and maintain that is on that inventory. After each inspection, Caltrans provides us a report to the engineering division, and they prescribe maintenance requirements that's intended to preserve the integrity of the bridge and maintain safety for the traveling public. We received a large quantity of those bridge reports back in 2021, which is what instigated this project. At that time, we did the field investigations, and the plans were developed for the prescribed maintenance requirements by Caltrans. Many of those items included work in the creek, which necessitated obtaining regulatory permits from various state and federal agencies. That is a very time consuming and costly process. And so those permits were obtained in 2023. At that point, when we were ready to put the project out to bid, it was late 2023, so we put it out then, and then we started construction, or I'm sorry, we opened bids, awarded the construction project in June, and started construction shortly thereafter. So there was a period of time when the plans were developed to when the construction began. So since we started construction now, we found that the bridges have had additional debris accumulate over those last few winters from when the plans were developed to where we are today. In addition, we received another bridge report from Caltrans prescribing additional maintenance requirements, deck treatment on the Bridgemont Bridge. So in order to utilize the existing permits that we already have on hand for this project, and in order to take advantage of the mobilization prices that are already built in, we are recommending to add this additional work now that has been prescribed since the original plans were developed. So, you know, we visited all the locations, we have updated quantities for all this. Previously, when the contract was awarded, a 15% contingency was built in. So we're asking for 31 additional percent. That's where the total 46% comes in. And the intent of that additional authorization is for this additional work and allowing us to really move forward quickly and get ready for the upcoming storms and take advantage of the prices that we already have on hand.
So what additional debris developed underneath the bridge? Is that, was that from like homeless camps, or was that from?
It's dirt, sediment, branches, trees, things that just travel naturally through the creek channels. So they start to accumulate under the structures. Typically, we have our crews go out and do the routine maintenance in the creeks themselves. But the debris that was prescribed by Caltrans for these locations are one that requires specialized equipment, which is why it was included in this contract. So we get a larger contractor that can get that equipment down in the, in the creek, plus the permitting requirements that were necessitated.
Thank you, Leslie.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from anybody? Any comments, questions? Okay, do we have a motion for item 10?
Move or rule?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Schaefer, second by Councilmember, Vice Mayor Lopez Taft. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? None? Our public hearing, item 11 has been tabled.
Mayor, we do have comments by Councilmembers.
Oh, oh, that's right. We skipped over the.
Regional board.
Important regional board update. Okay, we'll start with, let me start with you, Councilmember Schaefer.
Oh, thanks.
Going this way today.
I got quite a, well, it shouldn't take too long. Okay, so on the 14th, right after the, the last council meeting, I, I went to Battle of the Bands. What an amazing event that was. Really well done. I, I will say that the, the American Legion Post 637 did a phenomenal job in, in that. That's great music, great food. It was, it was really amazing. So, and then on September 19th, I had a Secog meeting. The Secog meeting was, and normally it's downtown at 15th and L. And this is, this was a remote, so we went and visited Placerville and had our meeting there. We did a tour of the local businesses. I was really surprised at, at the volume. Between September, between Labor Day and Christmas, it, Apple Hill Agricultural District up there represents $350 million a year in market. That's tremendous. That is, I, I never really thought about agriculture for Eldorado County, but they are big in agriculture. It was really interesting to see many of these families that are up there originally went to the Larson Ranch. I highly recommend visiting there. They have a, a family museum where they have, this family came over from Illinois in a covered wagon. And they have their original covered wagon that's in the museum. And it is, they've been up there for many generations. And I didn't even know that they weren't growing apples. And they started growing apples in 1960. And before that, it was a pear. There was a pear, big, very major pear disease that wiped out the entire crop of pears and destroyed the trees. So they, they actually, even back then, they went back to, down to UC Davis and said, what can we grow in this soil? And they grew apples. And they've really blown up into a, most recently, they, they're, they're growing grapes up there, but they're still growing lots and lots of apples. So I certainly would encourage the folks to, to go and, and visit Apple Hill. And certainly, the, the, the interesting thing about the Secog meeting was when they had the Calder fire up there, they actually, if anybody who's driven through Placerville, there's three streetlights. Well, for the purpose of evacuation, they actually made all the lights green and blocked off the roads so everybody could get out. And that, that spurred an idea of how do we, how do we streamline the traffic going through Placerville? And so that's the ultimate plan. They talk about, they talked about doing a, an overhead freeway that would, but it would cost $300 million to do an overhead suspended freeway through Placerville. So they're actually, so they're going to do a, it's a $16 million project. They're going to install emergency barriers at all the intersections, and the, the roads going across Highway 50 will be closed permanently and open for only emergency purposes. Emergency vehicles have to get across Highway 50 quickly. They can do that, but everyone else is going to, there's multiple ways to go around. If you go up to Carson Road, you used to be able to, you used to be able to make a left turn there, Carson Road. Well, now they've done an underpass. You get off at El, you get off at Camino, and you go down the frontage road, and actually the really nice sculpture, and you go under the freeway. So they've done a pretty good job up there. That was really impressive, their, their fire evacuation plans up there. Were really interesting to see how a small city of only 11,000 people and a very small budget compared to, our budget's 40, 45 million, their budget is 11 million. They don't have a ton of money up there. So really impressive. That was a, a very impressive presentation. So that was on the, on September 19th. And then on September 20th, I had a great meeting with Kathy Morris. We talked about some of the issues with the neighborhood. And this is one situation where I don't really, we don't get, because we're talking public comment, we really don't get to interact with, with the folks here that were complaining about my comments from the last council meeting. But I certainly would, rather than do this email back and forth, and a letter and email back and forth, let's sit down and talk about it. Let's, let's stick about, sit down and talk about what the issue. I, I understand, the neighborhoods are the neighborhoods. But the issue that I have is that when you're combined two and six, you now have a, a population of over 13,000 people. If you had an issue, where are you going to, where are you going to meet 100 people? Where are you going to meet 200 people on a monthly basis? That's a, that's a pretty big concern. So anyway, but there's other issues that I certainly would love to, to chat about. I've never been invited, well, way back when, when I was, in, in 2020, I was invited to the two and six meeting before they were combined. But I've never been invited to an Area Six meeting, or Area Seven, Eight and Nine has never invited me to. I don't go to council, I, I don't typically go to neighborhood meetings unless I'm invited, because it turns into an update for city council, and you have, already have a speaker. And so I'm certainly willing to, to meet with anybody. So let's see, on, on yesterday, not yesterday, Monday, I had my first RT board meeting. I was the alternate for RT. It was a great meeting. There's some, some big changes happening for Smart Ride. So Smart Ride is out of funding. I like the, the idea, I've kind of talked about this many times before, where with a, a, a ride on Smart Ride, each way is $47.88. That's how much it costs. That costs, that's how much it costs RT. Well, RT is going to do a public-private, this is going to be launching very soon, a public-private agreement with the rideshare apps, Lyft, Uber. And they're fervently working on, on putting that together. I think that's a great idea. It will reduce the cost from $47.80 to about five bucks.
Is it district-wide or just Citrus Heights?
That's, that's all of Sacramento County, still by zones, though. So you're, if you purchase a, a ticket through Lyft, you can, you're still going to be limited to the zones that Smart Ride would take you to. So the idea is first mile, last mile for transit, or if, if the, if the doctor's office happens to be within the zone, you can use it for a doctor's appointment. You're going to get much faster service from Lyft or Uber. I just hope we have enough drivers out there to, to, to support the, the additional business. So I was also appointed to the, the Capitol Corridor. This is the new additional train service that's going to be going between, it's already exists through, from Roseville. You can take the train from Roseville down to Oakland, San Francisco, or Richmond, transfer to San Francisco. So I'm excited about serving on that board, but that board only meets once a quarter. But I'm very interested in, in serving on the Capitol Corridor. I'll be representing, I represent Citrus Heights on RT, and I will be representing RT on Capitol Corridor. So with that, that's all I have.
Congratulations. Thank you. Vice Mayor Lopez Taft.
All right. I did a couple of the events, Councilmember Schaefer did, in addition to those two, Battle of the Bands and the Citrus Heights, Best of Citrus Heights event. You forgot Sunday Fun Day. And I have to commend you, Councilmember Schaefer, for standing up a booth. And I think we should all participate in that, because when I stood there in that booth and watched even kids spin the wheel and ask questions about the city, it was exciting to inform and educate our young people as well as our, you know, adult residents about what's going on in the city. That's good and amazing. So I really have to, kudos to you, Councilmember Schaefer. The other meeting that I attend during this time period is the SAC Steps Homeless Policy Council. Every quarter, they have this meeting, and we give updates as cities in, that are part of the policy council, as well as we receive reports from other areas that affect the homelessness counts and homeless services. And this time, we did a Community Standards Program Performance Report. So if you're ever interested in anything that goes on with the Homeless Policy Council, you can always look up all the information online. And so if you're interested, feel free to send me an email. I don't have it handy right this moment, but I'm always willing to share the information if you're looking for it. But this Community Standards Program Performance Report attempts to quantify the services that are being delivered. It's somewhat in answer to the audit that happened over homelessness dollars. And so now they're putting together their key performance indicators for the dollars that have been spent and the service results. And so I'm always interested in making sure our dollars are going through the right efforts. And this Program Performance Report really does attempt to do that. So I applaud their efforts, and it's a continuing effort. So they showed us an early version of those, those programs. And that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Middleton, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, starting on Friday, September 13th, I attended a community event hosted by Mayor. They're a local organization that's right outside of our boundaries in Orangeville, and they help Iranian-American seniors in our region. And we have a good population of those folks here. And it was inspiring to see this group and how they foster a sense of belonging, belonging with their seniors by making sure they're connected to resources, connected to our food pantry and those types of things. And it's just a valuable resource for our seniors. On Saturday, September 14th, I also attended the American Legion Post Battle of the Bands barbecue. So excited to see that event come back. It was awesome city-sponsored event with top-notch barbecue. My husband's going to see this and be like, really? But yeah, it was really good barbecue. And it was great to see so many local bands and families enjoying the day together. They even had a little kid's zone there, and we just, it was just really nice just to see folks out there at Rush, at the Rush House, really enjoying the outdoors and the open space. Tuesday, September the 17th, I attended the Chamber Luncheon, and we had the privilege of recognizing Bill Van Duker for his remarkable 40-year journey as a small business owner in Citrus Heights. As you many of you know, Bill owned All-Star Printing. He has recently sold that business. But he has been a cornerstone of our local community, providing jobs and quality services. I know that, that we've all, has had some type of running with Bill as the grandfather of Citrus Heights, and just the way that he has served our community is commendable. Thursday, September 19th, was the Citrus Heights Chamber Best of Citrus Heights. It was another sold-out event, and it was a great success. It was cowboy theme, I did not get the memo. The city was actually, I sat at the city table, and the best part of it was the dessert run, because our table got to pick our dessert first, which was a chocolate cake. I was very happy. September 21st was a packed day for us. We went to the Fair Oaks Chicken Festival. It's, the location has changed. It's actually at a community park. It's a free community event, and that was the theme of the last two weeks with my family, was going out to all the free community events to see what our community, just outside of Citrus Heights and within our community, has to offer. There were no chickens there. There were turkeys, however. And they had great local vendors, and it was really nice just to go out and walk around and talk to folks. And let's see, also, that, my last event was Habitat for Humanities, Hard Hat and Heels Gala, where Citrus Heights received a huge shout-out for our Sayonara Project. I mean, they are so excited to come out there and be able to break ground in our community. And I know that I'm very excited to see more affordable housing being built for working families, and to make sure that they are able to start building a foundation to be able to have more kids. and to make sure that they're able to start building a foundation to be able to have more kids in our communities and more just resources and folks who are here to help support our community. Oh, one more event, Sunday Fun Day, which was great. I don't know if you guys stayed long enough to see the canine demonstrations, but that was pretty cool. It's my first time I actually stayed there. It wasn't too hot this year, so I got to watch it at 12 o'clock. And then went all about my day to go buy groceries or whatever it was I did on Sunday.
So Councilmember Middleton, there's no chicken to the chicken festival?
Yeah, question, no chickens.
What happened?
No, because it used to be.
Did they cook them all or what?
No, they just, they moved the location so the chickens hang out in the one location. And I asked, you know, the, the event promoters and they're just like, chickens and turkeys don't get along. So wherever there are chickens, there are no turkeys. If there are turkeys, there are no chickens. Blew my mind.
Okay.
So when people complain about turkeys in the neighborhood, we should just dump chickens there.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Portia Middleton. I have been, I don't know, it's like, I look at my calendar, there's not one day with nothing written in it. So there's something every day. If I started out on the 12th with going to an STA meeting, you're talking boring. Not so much happens at it, other than we're going to recommend to SAICOG our priority projects for funding and you guys will decide, we don't. So I thought that was, okay, well, I went down there. And then I went to the Veterans BBQ, the Battle of the Bands. Natalie, did you win best food?
I did not, but my meatballs were delicious.
What, what?
The meatballs were delicious. I did not win.
Okay, the meatballs were good. So they voted on the food and the bands and it was, I never saw such young Marines. The Marines looked like they were in high school. They looked so young. They were, they were cute. Then I did Monday with the mayor on the 16th. And I think I had two people show up. And next, and then you did, you did last week for me, you forgot to mention that. I had, had a previous commitment, so Councilmember Schaefer filled in for me. I will be there next Monday. He will be there the Monday after that because I'm going to Florida for the Seward District. But I have some apple caramel coffee that's really good. And so I will have some of that there. Then I went to the mosquito vector control board meeting on the 17th. We're wrapping down the mosquito season for West Nile. You will be seeing your winter mosquitoes, which are the Anopheles mosquitoes, which do not carry West Nile. And so they will become an annoyance. And so just swat them. You can still use your repellents for them if they're annoying, but they are the winter mosquitoes. And they, they generally fly in like a little zigzag and so they're annoying. For the year, we had a fewer, this year was less than the year before. As I mentioned the last time, that, you know, when you have a big season of West Nile, so many birds die that that's your reservoir is now gone. And so for the following year, we have fewer until they, they build up again. So in Sacramento County, so far this year, and we, unless they, unless the Health Department reports more, we've had two human cases in Sacramento County, three in Yolo County, for a total of five in our district. Two horses, one in Yolo, one in Sacramento, which is beyond me why, because they do make a vaccine for horses and horses shouldn't come down with this. We have had 55 positive dead birds in our, in our districts, in the Sacramento District and two in Yolo. So we judge by our dead birds. Statewide, there's been 98 human cases in 2023 and 38 in the state this year. So we've had five of the 38. So it's still up there. And let's see, what else about that? I, nothing else. Then I went to the Area 11 meeting on the 18th and that was interesting. And then on the 19th, I went to the funeral for Ruben Hernandez at the Sacramento Cathedral, Western Sacramento Cathedral, fantastic place, fantastic service. I think when the priest sang Ave Maria, I just felt, that was it for me. I did miss the Best of Citrus Heights that night because I didn't know the date of it. When they sent out, to save the date, I had already made a commitment to some other event. But I did sign the 44 Proclamations. It did not run out of ink. And I did sign the proclamation for Bill. So I was aware of those things going on, I just couldn't be there. Sunday Fun Day was, was terrific. It wasn't as well-attended as usual, but the weather was so perfect. I think that people will eventually, the venue is so good now. You know, it used to be at the other end of the park and now it's where it is and it's just really good. And his booth was incredible. He spun a wheel and it would land on Sunrise Tomorrow or Rhodes or some, you know, event in our city. And he would explain what's going on to the kids, to people, and it was really good. And I agree, Mary Jane, next year we'll, we'll just group-wise do it. And then I went to an Area 10 meeting. We had April West from the Fire District gave a wonderful presentation on fire safety. And let's see, we had today, at 5:00, all of us attended the oath of office of our promotions and the honorees and all the awards of the various police department services that, the various awards. And the police person of the year was our hero, Felicia Taylor. So we love Felicia, congratulations. And she used to be our pop officer. That's what we remember, was she was just a pop officer. Now she's, yeah, so anyway, that's, that's all my meeting, that's my, my report.
Next item, please.
So next item, public hearing, I just wanted to note again that this item has been continued to a future City Council meeting. The next item is regular calendar, item number 12. The subject is Gateway Activation Project Award Professional Services Agreement. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for professional services with Docking Engineering for the Gateway Activation Project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Casey Kempner, your Community Development Director. Pleasure to be here tonight to talk about this exciting project. It's a little bit of a play on words because it is gap project. Also, it is a gateway into the city, so it's kind of a fun little play. Tell you a little bit about it. The council's strategic goals, you know, we've making a lot of headway on enhancing community vibrancy and engagement. And if you've walked along the Old Auburn Trail or the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail, you know, I drove by Sunday on the way to Sunday Fun Day and there was a lot of people using it and just hanging out, having coffee as they walk. And it's really kind of brought people together. It's really, really been a, a good amenity for our community. And then also related to those types of projects, we also help improve all modes of transportation. And one of the council's strategic objectives from this last March was to issue the request for proposals for this project and we have now done that. And we've interviewed the qualified firm and we have a recommendation for you tonight to go forward with one firm called Docking Engineering. So the Gateway Activation Project stemmed from a $700,000 appropriation that was, that came from the state general fund via a former Assembly Member Cooley's office. So in 2023, we entered an agreement with Caltrans that dictates when the money has to be spent and what it can be used on, which is only this project and, and you know, how far we have to get and so forth. The money has to be expended by April 2026, so we have a pretty lengthy outreach and engagement environmental process. So we, we're trying to get going ASAP. The intent for this project is to create a competitive application for state and federal funding, most notably the ATP project. And as I go through this, you might see why we think it'll be really a competitive project. So about the scope of work, the main parts of this phase are outreach and engagement, which in a minute I'll show you the map, it involves the Citrus Heights community, the Sacramento County Incorporated and Roseville. And then collaboration with their professional teams to, both of those agencies, their engineering and planning teams. Preliminary engineering will get us to a, a pretty far along, from an engineering perspective, to know what, what the plans look like and make us ready for more of a shovel-ready project. And we'll also clear the environmental review. And so a lot of, there'll be a lot of outreach, a lot of engagement, a lot of, you know, is this the right option for this particular project? And what are the different options that we can consider connecting these various trails? So I want to talk about the objectives. So one objective is completing the streets for Old Auburn Whacktel Road. If you've driven by those, they're very piecemeal in terms of whether there's sidewalk or whether there's not, or sometimes whether there's bike lanes or whether there's not. So looking at that and seeing where we should make investments there. One of my favorite parts is the potential to connect to both existing and proposed regional trails and via Roseville's trail network and connection. I'll show you a map here that shows, in a minute, that shows that. But we can connect to Roseville and they have a 45-mile trail network that we can, can get, give our residents access to. So connecting our existing Arcade Cripple Creek Trail, the eastern terminus of that, as well as the eastern terminus of Old Auburn Road, connecting that to the Dry Creek Greenway, which is proposed in Roseville, will really up our, our multi-use trail game. And then also looking at intersection improvements along Old Auburn Road. If you've driven in from the north, you see there's kind of an interesting two stop signs, back-to-back intersections. They're, they're not great for, for operations and there's some challenges with those. So seeing if those are still the best options, we'll be part of this project, looking at, looking at if that's the right, right treatment. So I wanted to show kind of where this fits in the region. As you can see here on this map, there's a regional vision for a 70-mile loop essentially that connects from Folsom Lake to downtown. A lot of this is already built. Roseville's currently building parts of this Dry Creek Greenway. And then you, everyone knows the American River Trail. So connecting those, that loop is gonna be huge for the region. It's part of SAICOG's vision to connect from, from suburban areas to rural areas and all throughout the region. So you can see here, our Old Auburn Trail is shown on the north, our Arcade Cripple Creek Trail is shown on the south. They're not that far apart. How you connect them, the, is the, the purple square represents the area of study where we're gonna look at how we connect those two and connect to the Dry Creek Greenway. So this is, Roseville's actively designing and building portions of the Dry Creek Greenway, our little corner of the city where we would tie into Roseville's right here at Old Auburn Road. You can see how their work, we'll be able to tap into that, get all the way under I-80 eventually and out to the regional Dry Creek Greenway as well. So this exhibit shows, in the purple here is the study area. You can see connecting Old Auburn Multi-Use Trail to the Arcade Cripple Creek is a huge advantage. You can make a loop and then also connecting to the Dry Creek Greenway will be huge. And then there are, the exact route and how you get to Folsom Lake is still being worked out from a regional perspective, but there are a number of routes that have been looked at and SAICOG's kind of leading that charge along with the county. In terms of the project team, from the Community Development Department, would be myself and Allison Bermudas. From Director Cave's Department, General Services Department, Leslie Blumquist, our senior engineer here from earlier, be running that. As well as, oh, it came off of here, Dr. Huber Shop. Marissa will be helping out with some of the, the comms related things. And Courtney will be helping with the grant, future grant opportunities that will go along with this. In terms of the project team, Docking Engineering is the prime. They also have AIM Consulting, Unico Engineering, Calendar Associates and Fair Enterprises. All these firms are really well-known, we've worked with in the past and have a good reputation for this type of projects. So we're recommending the council award a contract to the Docking team for about $685,000, which is below the engineer's estimate and below the allocation we have for the state. The balance of that grant fund will be able to use to cover staff time. So with that, I have a recommended motion and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from the council members? Questions? It's a great project. So it's not our project though, right? We just, for that little teeny-squiny, dill-guy in the corner?
Well, yeah, you gotta get, connect the dots, right? So that's a, that's a first step and it, and it connects to that broader region in, in Roseville. So those are, those are pretty big milestones, I think.
Okay, do we have a motion, please?
Do we have to take one at a time or?
It's just the one, right?
I think it's one.
Yeah.
Right, right. Read it.
Oh, it's like the wrong thing, okay. So I'll make a motion, move, approve resolution number 2024.
Councilmember, Councilmember Schaefer, could you turn on your microphone?
Thank you very much. Approve Resolution Number 2024, Resolution of City Council of City Citrus Heights, California, authorizing city manager to execute an agreement for professional services with Docking Engineering for a Gateway Activation Project.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Schaefer, second by Councilmember Middleton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous. Thank you, Casey. Is the next item, please?
Next item is regular calendar, item number 13. The subject is Beautification Crew Program Efforts and Outcomes by the General Services Department. And it's just an informational report.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Regina Cave, your General Services Director. I'm pleased to be before you here this evening to report on our Beautification Crew Program. Now that we've had our Beautification Crew as a program and as the crew in place for close to two years now, we have quite a few accomplishments and metrics to be able to share with you as well as with the public. So I will go over our background and purpose of the program, again, our progress and our metrics, and highlight also our partnerships and contributing successes. So the background of the program is that we had a lot of growing concerns of blight within and adjacent to public rights-of-way throughout the community. We've seen it before COVID, but we've actually seen quite a bit of an uptick since COVID. We had a lot of impacts on the businesses and residents, quality of life impacts, safety in our local economy. So in 2022, as part of our focused area work plan and the council's strategic goal, we identified addressing blight as a priority. This is kind of just some general blight, identifying different contributing causes to the blight. And then in 2022, we launched the Beautification Program. So the purpose is to provide dedicated resources to address our blight citywide, focusing on our public spaces within our public rights-of-way, but also partnering with other agencies and private properties as well when necessary. So also to track activities and progress, to demonstrate usefulness and the benefits of the program and provide transparency to the community. This was, or currently is, a program funded through our ARPA funds. We want to make sure that we are very transparent, as with all of our uses of our, our taxpayer dollars, but making sure that we are very transparent with how these funds are expended. And coordinate efforts between departments for increased resources. It's important to know that while our Beautification Crew does operate out of our general services and, and really independently, we also rely on our partnership with the Police Department to be able to support our Beautification Crew and also our Beautification Crew to support the Police Department in terms of the teams that are out in the community. And then partner with external agencies on jurisdictional boundaries to increase attention and maintenance efforts. So really highlighting some of those locations that we have, that we share with Caltrans, with Sacramento County DOT, with library and with Sunrise Recreation and Park District. So again, the program launched in 2022. We had kind of a soft launch as we had our first Beautification Crew member, James Holm, joined us in October. And then in December, we had our second member join us, Leon Yang. And so at that point, we considered December kind of our official launch of our Beautification Crew. At that time, our gentleman highlight, excuse me, went around and identified a lot of our hotspots, working with their supervisor, Amanda Velazquez, and our operations team, to identify a lot of the hotspots that we'd been seeing from years prior, where we would see a lot of blight popping up. Looking at our commercial corridors, public gathering areas along some of our parks, but also within SRPD and the library, areas around Caltrans, and also our creeks and our canals. Even when it is in the dry season or in the wet season, we need to make sure that we're maintaining those areas just the same. And also utilization of our technology. We knew that it was gonna be important to be able to leverage the technology that we had, not wanting to invest too much extra dollars in that, but looking to see what we had available to us to be able to stretch that technology for reporting, tracking, and then also customizing how we want those reports to look to be able to share with the public. Maintaining a routine schedule and regular presence, we've noticed that that's been instrumental in making sure that we are staying on top of the blight remediation to make sure that we avoid that broken window effect. That as soon as you kind of let your eyes off of one location for too long, some of that blight starts reoccurring. And so we have to make sure that we stay on that schedule. Collaboration with the partners, as I mentioned, working with Sunrise Recreation and Park District has been paramount. They do have a lot of open spaces throughout the community that has a shared boundary with city open spaces. And while the community is not aware of who owns what, they look at it as all as public space. So we have to treat it the same. Instituting other contributing programs and preventative measures has also been very important, such as our shopping cart ordinance, contracts that we've executed with Caltrans to be able to maintain some of their public rights-of-way around analope and I-80 so that we can do the work much quicker than they can respond to it, but we also get reimbursement by Caltrans at the same time. And some other preventative measures I'll show you as we go through some of the photos. And then marketing, development and execution of the CARES campaign has been huge. This has been able to really get a community support and involvement through the CARES campaign. The report, maintain and chip-in has been instrumental as people, people have been using the C-click Fix options, feeling more comfortable to call in or email in or utilize different technology measures that we have to be able to report items for our Beautification Crew to respond to. So here's a few pictures of our progress that we've had since launching the program in 2022. As a gateway into Citrus Heights on Greenback Lane on the west side of the city, we had a lot of issues over the years with debris, with undesirable activity, some illegal camping along. along that wall, and it just does not reflect well on the community as you come into Citrus Heights. So in addition to keeping our eyes on that location and responding quickly, we also pressure washed that wall as part of our sound wall beautification program, and then through some very smart ideas with our operations team, with Armando Velasquez and a local contractor, we had some gates fabricated to be able to block off those tree wells. And that has definitely helped and been a major point in being able to keep a lot of that undesirable activity along that wall.
And it looks good, too.
It looks very well. This was actually a picture I made sure I drove there today to make sure it was looking clean out there before I reported on that location. Additional progress that we've had, so as I mentioned, our canals and our creeks tend to be target areas for a lot of storage of, illegal storage of personal properties, transient activity. And so our crews regularly have their 14 or so hotspots around the city, including canals that they go to, to make sure that we don't have a huge accumulation or regular accumulation of debris. So what we are also working on is additional cages that we're going to be placing on some of these canals. We've tested them out within the last month at another location off of Antelope near Loppy Lane, and so they're gates that we're able to lock to keep a lot of activity out of these canals. But then in the winter months, when we do start having water flowing through the creeks, we can actually open those up to make sure that they're.
What are we looking at here?
These are creek canals. So these are actually big culverts that are underneath bridges. This is on, by Greenback Lane and Indian River. So there's three of these, three long tunnels, and this is where the water conveys through from the north side of Greenback to the south side of Greenback.
The creek flows through this?
Correct. This is for water. So we will have two of the three openings at this location that will be blocked off with those cages, that staff will be able to maintain and keep them locked. We'll keep one open in the interim while it's dry, because we do have a lot of critters that come through there, wildlife, including deer. And so the last thing we want to do is have the deer cut through Greenback Lane in traffic. So we'll see how this works, and we'll be able to report back at a later date to council as well. Additional progress, this is over at Antelope and I-80, behind Quick Quack Car Wash. We tend to see a lot of activity around there, not only unhoused activity, but just general illegal dumping and accumulation. And unfortunately, that has had negative impacts on those businesses back there between Quick Quack, McDonald's, California Burrito. So we've been really working hard to keep that area clean. This is part of our maintenance agreement that we have with Caltrans, so we can go out there, take care of the cleanup, and then receive reimbursement from Caltrans. This is another area that's along the Antelope and 80 overcrossing. You don't see it because you only see the fenced side, but there's a little tunnel, so to speak, that separates between Antelope Road Bridge and the adjacent residence, and we've had a lot of activity back there that usually only the folks who back up to that little tunnel can actually see it, and they've been impacted. So our, between our beautification crew and our impact team, they keep their eyes on there regularly to make sure they keep that clean, and regularly have to secure the fencing back in that spot. Additional progress, this is along Van Marren Lane, kind of close to Christ the King. We tend to see a lot of just illegal dumping on the side of the road. This is not necessarily associated with any homelessness or anything, but just some accumulation of household items, shopping carts. And so this is just pictures showing our crew picking up near the creeks. And then again, as I mentioned, it's very important that we have our relationship with our Citrus Heights Police Department partners. They have been instrumental in being able to work with us on a daily basis to make sure that we support them and they support us, and we're able to get a lot of the visible blight that is found on the sides of the roads near some of our businesses immediately So some metrics. It's important to see the kind of volume that we're experiencing since we've incorporated the beautification program. So our total service requests assigned to our beautification crew since we started, again, since December of 2022 till now. So we have, the light green is from 2022 to 2023, so 13 months, and the dark green is eight months. And these are the numbers that are reflected in that report that was provided in the packet. But as you can see, we've had exceptional numbers just in a very short period of time. So for 2022 into 2023, we had an average of about 235 service requests a month for these two gentlemen, and we're averaging for this year 275 service requests a month. That's a lot, when you're looking at about 20 working days, eight-hour days. It's a lot of activity. So service requests generated via C-click Fix. This has been a very important tool for our community to use as we go to some of our neighborhood area meetings, and we hear from folks. They really appreciate the accessibility using the C-click Fix and how quick our teams respond. So not only do they get a response immediately when the C-click Fix item is received, they also receive a response when it is closed out. So they like that interactive communication. So also looking at what did our system look like before our beautification crew? This highlights similar categories that when we would receive service requests, how we would categorize them, and our existing teams, or sometimes augmented through some of our contract labor, they would address these items. But as you can see, 2,130 over nearly five years compared to the numbers that we see from our beautification crew. And I think it's really a testament of, I'm hoping not more blight that we see in the community, but just better reporting, a lot more interaction from our community, really trying to push, if you see something, report it. And so it's been very important for us to be a lot more proactive on our maintenance around the community. And again, this is important to highlight, is the Citrus Heights Police Department, as I mentioned, we started this program in 2022, and shortly thereafter, we started on a program with our police department partners to see if a couple days a week, we could get some support, because in some situations, our beautification crew do encounter some challenging situations, and so we wanted to make sure to keep them safe, and also to keep our community safe, we have the partnership and the support of our police department. Shortly thereafter, we started increasing it to five days a week, and that has been incredible. We've gotten a great response from the public. Our police department has been able to address a lot of issues that ordinarily they wouldn't be able to, just because of the nature of the situation. They would rely on our beautification crew to be able to remove belongings from an area, or to be able to transport belongings, and they didn't have that mechanism in place. And likewise, we didn't have a mechanism in place to be able to help our beautification crew safely do their job. So this has been very instrumental in ensuring that this program is successful. Again, additional metrics, this shows the last 90 days of beautification assigned service requests. This is a map that we have from our service request system, which is called City Works. We're able to see all the different types of service requests that come in, and ones that we close out at any given time. And this tool feeds into our dashboard. So about a year and a half ago, we implemented a dashboard online, so our community can also see what the numbers look like in terms of our intake and our output. And so this is live on our website at any given time. You can see it, and it refreshes. It's very dynamic, and it refreshes every few minutes as activity comes into play. And this reflects not only beautification crew-related categories, primarily beautification, we also have a few else on there, such as streetlights. Streetlights is a hot item that we get, and as we talk about safety and beautification around the community, we want to make sure folks are reporting when streetlights are Partnerships and contributing successes, again, working alongside CHPD, the impact team, and BC Partnership has strengthened the program immensely, supporting non-city public spaces like SRPD and library under the guidance of city manager Feeney. About a year and a half ago, we began working really closely with the library over at Van Marren and Auburn, just because we saw a lot of undesirable activity that was deterring families from utilizing the library. So we worked in partnership with folks at the library, with Sacramento County, as well as with Sunrise Recreation and Park District, since they do have property immediately adjacent. And through different efforts of our police department and our beautification crew being out there daily, the Sunrise Park District putting gates to be able to minimize access into their driveway, the same thing is with the library, putting also a gate on their side, so after hours, it would not be accessible, and putting posting cable along the perimeter to provide a visual barrier between the public right-of-way and the library's campus has been instrumental in keeping a lot of that undesirable activity away from the front edge and away from the access doors to the library. And again, we have the agreement with Caltrans for jurisdictional boundary maintenance. We're able to be out there much quicker than Caltrans is able to respond. We have our improved responses from Sacramento County on some of our jurisdictional borders, especially along Greenback Lane. And then, of course, our CARES campaign, encouraging that participation from our public, showing our progress, and then also having a united message through our different channels. So in closing, this has been a vital program to the city's operations, both the general services and the city as a whole, meeting a lot of the goals and objectives of the community and the city council. And I do want to highlight some folks that have been paramount to this project being the success that it is today. It has taken a lot of work to be able to get it running efficiently and smoothly, and being able to communicate with the public. So of course, we have James Holm and Leon Yang, who are our beautification crew. In addition to their daily job, they also provide after-hours emergency response, and you've seen him at many of our events, helping us set up at the trail opening, at Stars and Stripes, at Sunday Fun Day. So they are, they are our team. We have Armando Velasquez and Brian Rowe of our operations division, providing the leadership guidance and training of the gentlemen. We have our support staff who take the calls, deal with a lot of the C-click Fix, the daily notifications of dispatches that we need to provide to the beautification crew, especially Michelle Parker, she and our general services department, she is the one who's been behind the scenes, dealing with all the technology, working with our IT department to get all of these systems going. And then, of course, our police department partners under Lieutenant Herman. We also have Detective Felicia Taylor, who has just been incredible to work with, with our beautification crew. She is out there five days a week with our crew, and it's been incredible. And then Officers Ryan Smith and Kenneth Spencer, they also were with our beautification crew from the get-go as we were working to try to find that rhythm of daily field response, if you will. So that is the end of my report, and I am available for any questions.
Any questions from council members?
A couple of questions and comments. You know, it's really hard when we look at the beautification crew. I've heard tremendous amount of feedback from the general public about how much nicer the city looks. This is, this really is a functional thing. It's hard to separate the activities from beautification crew from the parking ordinances that we have, and also the recycling center issues that we have. Those are all three, while they're not necessarily agendized together, they're all linked. And when we look at the beautification crew, beautification crew funding is over in 2026. And so if we don't address some of these issues sooner than later, it just creates more work for our beautification crew. So if we were to, you know, kind of allow the parking ordinance, or allow people to camp in their cars, we could be creating more work for the beautification crew. So this all has to work in concert with each other. And I think that the, when I, especially when I think about the one recycling center that was mentioned tonight on Auburn Boulevard, if we're going to have recycling centers, I think they need to be a little more discreet. That one is really kind of in-your-face, driving by, that's really an in-your-face. I was, I drove by there, and sure enough, just a few hundred feet down the street, here's a Home Depot, Home Depot. Okay, that's a, if it came from Home Depot, Carmichael, Home Eagle, the shopping cart. Or it came from Antelope. Either way, it's a long haul from either one of those stores. But nonetheless, there's a, and these two carts were, I couldn't identify where the other one was, but they were laid over, kind of like sending a message that, hey, this is my cart, I'm going to leave it here, don't take it. And so that's kind of the, that's the gist of what I got from that. So that's, you know, that's kind of a big concern, that these are, all these things are tied together, and we have to be prepared for what happens when 2026 comes around. What are we going to do then? Are we going to say, well, okay, we've addressed this, but it's, this, this activity will come roaring back unless we're prepared to deal with it from a policy perspective? That's what I had to say. Thank you.
Any comments?
Thank you for providing such a comprehensive report and showing the stellar impact of this program, and why it was so important for the city council and for, you know, the city as a whole to really buckle down and invest, because I know there were some questions and concerns about spending our ARPA dollars on this, but the return on our investment has been tremendous, and there's no doubt about that. So I really appreciate you just showing the before and after photos. Some of those were shocking. I didn't even know some of those places existed. So it's just nice for our community to be able to see how we are working as a community, as a council, to make sure we're addressing these issues. Thank you.
I do want to echo those sentiments as well. You know, I am a big fan and user of C-click Fix app, and I really think that has, you know, that level of technology tied in with the efforts and coordination between departments, and not only city staff, but our police department, it's been an incredible effort. And I think it truly shows the creativity that we've been able to apply with very limited dollars, but a whole lot of innovation. And so I really, really appreciate your spearheading that crew and just getting everyone coordinated, and our city really making a statement about how important this is for us. There is not a department that isn't touched by this effort, and so thank you so much for giving us that wonderful report.
Well, first, I want to thank our city manager, Ash Feeney, for putting blight as one of the priorities when you first came to our city. You must have looked out and saw what some other people have emailed us about. I will share that the lady that emailed me about how horrible Citrus Heights looks, and what are we doing about broken windows, and I answered her, and she did answer me back. And basically, she misses her teenage hangout. I think she meant Rita's Hamburgers at Silver Corners. I think that was her teenage hangout, the old Rita's. So, and she was complaining about them all. I know, and I said, we don't control the blight over there, that's public, you know, so we will take some steps the best we can, and I know Kathy Lynn does his best she can to get that picked up. But that is the image that people get when they come up sunrise, but the work you guys, it's got to be, the guys who ride this truck have got to be unsung heroes, because they probably pick up the yuckiest, I mean, ew. I mean, it's just got to be, when they go home, they just must feel ew, the way I would feel. So I congratulate that crew, and the partnerships that you've made. I mean, you never cleaned up Antelope and I-80 without that partnership. And so this is really good that we work that way, and I think we'll find funding. You know, it's a great program, so we might have to give up fireworks. Bake sales, maybe. So anyways, thank you so much, Regina. Thank you so much, Mr. Feeney.
Do we have another item? The next item, department reports, there are none, so the next item is city manager items.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Ash Feeney, your city manager, and it's a lot to be proud of tonight. I'm just really, you know, as a city manager, it's really an honor and a privilege to work with so many talented people and be able to call them colleagues. You heard from several of them tonight, and I'd say just, you know, what you see here at these meetings relative to, you know, Director Cave, Director Kempner, all the presentations that you saw tonight, that's part of the culture we have here, and a big part of that is that employees really care. You know, they care about the work they do, care about the community, and are always striving for innovative approaches to challenges. And this beautification crew that Director Cave presented tonight is really a testament to that. You know, she talked about the agreements with Caltrans and things of that nature. None of that existed before this. And her and her team, as well as our police department, really across all departments, had a focus on working on solutions, and we wouldn't be here without them. So I just really have a ton of gratitude to all the leadership that's been demonstrated here, and all the teams that have supported that, because none of this would happen without the support of our great staff we have here, and so just really proud of their work, and I just feeling good about tonight. So I wanted to start off with that. And speaking of some pride here, what a fantastic oath of office ceremony that our police department had. Chief Alex Turcot in his chief's office did a fantastic job presenting the oath of office. We had several promotions, and we had some new team members. Actually, some team members that had been with the department had gone to other agencies and have come back, and now are in leadership positions. So you can see, we have Lieutenant Joseph Aguilar, Lieutenant Bill Dunning, Commander Michael Wells, Sergeant Jennifer Kell, Sergeant Joseph Keller, and Communication Supervisor Sarah Frederick. And so some great promotions, and like you say, some new people coming in, as well as some fantastic awards that were there. Appreciate the entire city council being at that ceremony, and the support you've provided for our police department. I've always been there, certainly since I've been city manager, and through and through, that's been something that I know I've appreciated, as well as the police department, as well as a support for the balance. as a support for the balance of our team. Sunday Fun Day, we had a lot of fun, didn't we? Great event, a lot of staff effort to put this on, really grateful to their efforts that made for a fantastic day for the community, lots of smiling faces there. And it was also weather cooperative, it was a beautiful day, beautiful day, and the entire council was there as well. Some opportunities for some more fun, and while we're on the community image kick, which we continue to be, we've got the Fall Chip-In Day. And this is an event that Armando Velasquez organizes, and he works with our neighborhood areas, as well as our volunteers, to beautify our city. And so this has an opportunity for Citrus Heights residents to volunteer on October 12th from 8:30 to 12:30. I still, we all see it, the project that was done last year was all the wood chips along Fountain Square and Stock Ranch there, and they still look terrific. And that was all done with community labor and the event that Armando organized. So we'll have another opportunity here Saturday, October 12th, 8:38, 7,000 Auburn Boulevard. And there's some breakfast, raffle, water, pizza, all that good stuff. HART is holding their annual Spaghetti Fest fundraiser. That is on October 18th at the Citrus Heights Community Center. Tickets are available. City is a sponsor of that event, and it's something that helps fund their rotating winter shelter, as well as many of the other activities that HART does on behalf of the community. So encourage the community to attend that event. It's a great event, and looking forward to that October 18th. And that concludes my comments.
What time do we get back from CalCities, do you know? That's the 18th, that's the same day.
If you're on the same flight, it's like 7:30, 8 o'clock.
Yeah, unfortunate, so unfortunately, it is in conflict with the CalCities event, but certainly be there in spirit, and you may be able to get there at the very tail end of the event if planes cooperate, so.
Okay.
But certainly, we'll have other staff, I'm sure, that'll be there, and I know the council will be there in spirit.
So the next item is items requested by council members, future agenda items.
Anybody have items to request? Request?
I wanted two things. One, I wanted, I forgot to add that when I signed those 44 proclamations for Best of Citrus Heights and then I couldn't attend, I just wanted to congratulate all the winners of Best of Citrus Heights for their phenomenal performance throughout the year. This is a vote that people in the city, you know, vote on for the various businesses. And I was neat when I was writing my name on all of them to see who was the weeners, the winners, and I was smiling, so it was good. I just wanted to congratulate everybody. And then I'd like to address the guy from TNT that would like to get a letter of support to the governor. Can I get a second on send in?
I'll get, I'll give you a second on that.
And you got his info on the thing, and so that's all I had. It is, you know, they, when he said, I saw this before, the stats of how many fireworks come from Nevada. And so if they get an interstate, you know, conglomeration of enforcement. Oh, the other thing, just an update, I saw today in my Public CEO news that the governor signed four bills that for people, the kids that do these road things, they increased the penalties. Now you can confiscate their vehicles and fines for participating and even being a spectator.
The side shows, what you're talking about.
Side shows. Yep, so that was good news. We're getting them, forget those bad guys. Okay. Anything else, anybody? We're adjourned.